Good afternoon, Council. We have the Spoken International Academy visiting us today that you've met. They're sitting in the back row. And we have Gabriel Lin Norris here this morning to ask you a brief question.
I was wondering if jurors who are selected for jury duty could be not penalized for when people are penalized for having to take vacation days off to complete jury duty? And sometimes people can't afford to take jury duty. What's planned for that or an idea?
Right. You came to the right place. You might not have heard this, but a couple of days ago, it was just announced I'm going to be a judge, actually.
Congratulations. That's very exciting.
But yeah, it's a huge problem. So they give jurors right now like $10 a day, and it's a huge financial burden for people unless their employer pays them to do it. So it's beyond what city council can do. Like, I don't think we can pass that law, but at the state, they could pass that to give people compensation and so that we would really have a jury of our peers, like-minded people from similar economic circumstances. So the short answer is a huge problem. It's not solved yet, but I would talk with your state legislator about that. And could you just tell us what year you are in school at the academy?
Eighth grade. I'm almost in high school.
Okay. And what's your teacher's name who brought you here today?
Mr. Granger.
Mr. Granger, Spencer Granger. So it was great, and we watched, for those of you who are watching. They came up and took over the dais, and they were debating whether or not to establish a country restaurant and what the menu would be and would the city help pay for it and things like that. And there were some very good questions. So thanks for participating all in. I hope you all enjoy the meeting today.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thanks for coming. So we're going to officially start our study session. And today, we're going to cover three different topics in reverse order. We're going to talk about the 2023 budget, particularly around funding the trench shelter. And we're also going to hear a presentation from Progressive Urban Management Associates about the strategic plan for the downtown Spokane partnership and the Business Improvement District evaluation. So we're looking forward to that. But before we do that, we have Jim Bamberger, who's the director of the Washington State Office of Civil Legal Aid, to give us a presentation on access to justice. And he's brought a colleague who's now located in Spokane. Jim will tell his story, but he's a longtime Spokaneite and did a lot of good stuff for the city before he was captured by Olympia. So come on up, Jim.
Well, thank you, Council President Beggs, members of the council. I once actually sat up there in an official city capacity when I served for nine years on the City Plan Commission. As President Beggs said, my name's Jim Bamberger. I consider myself home when I come to Spokane. I lived here for 25 years. I raised my family here. I served the public here. And I was only forced to leave when the Supreme Court asked me to start this new agency called the Office of Civil Legal Aid back in 2005. I come back as often as I can, and I'm so quite thrilled to see how it's changed and yet how, at some level, it continues to be Spokane. So thank you very much. It's really a great honor to talk to you today about access to justice and civil legal aid. I'm going to give you just a little bit of context and history. I will try to speak carefully. I will be talking about some things that are uncomfortable for some people. But I also want you to understand, most importantly, what the civil legal aid system is about, who it is in the city of Spokane and in Spokane County, what kinds of cases we do and what kind of work we do, and the challenges that low-income people experience each and every day as they try to navigate through a wide range of legal problems. I'm going to try and do this right. I did. So what is civil legal aid, you might ask, if you have not talked about it or been presented with any information about it before? Civil legal aid is a program that is designed to equalize and ensure equity in the allocation and application of the laws in our country, in our state, and in our communities for everybody. It finds its origins in the original War on Poverty. It was created under President Johnson and by essentially his War on Poverty czar, our Sergeant Shriver, in the 1960s. What was the purpose? To give legal voice to individuals and communities and address directly laws, practices, and systems that operate to harm low-income and minority communities. In Washington State, the federal program served as the backbone of the current state legal aid system. The first federally funded program in Spokane was an organization called Spokane Legal Services Center. It was created in 1970. It existed up until 1996, when it merged with two other statewide legal aid programs to create what we now know as the Northwest Justice Project and Columbia Legal Services. Spokane Legal Services Center, which I had the privilege to lead for nine years during the 80s and early 90s, served clients, long-term clients in five counties, Ferry Stevens, Ponderay, Spokane, and Lincoln. And it was supported, in addition, by the efforts of local bar associations. So you had the federal program, and then in many, many communities, local bar associations felt the call of responsibility to provide volunteer legal services to low-income people. And so the Spokane County Bar Association answered that call in the early 1980s, creating the Spokane Bar's Spokane County Bar Association's Volunteer Attorney Program. That program has a very long history of active participation and provision of volunteer attorney services, and it continues very strongly today. Spokane Bar, I'm a member of the Spokane Bar still, and I'm very proud of the work that the volunteers in our Spokane Bar do. The Office of Civil Legal Aid was established on the recommendation of a 2003 Supreme Court Task Force. It was created by the legislature in a bipartisan bill and became effective in 2005. The director of that agency, of this agency, is appointed by the Supreme Court, and I was appointed in 2005 as the first and, to date, only director, but that won't last for long. I've announced my intent to leave the position early next year. Going back to the early federal program, President Johnson and Sergeant Shriver understood that legal structures, systems, and practices worked to disempower and to systematically harm long-term communities, especially minority communities. They viewed the legal services program as a necessary component of a national response and a national restorative justice effort. We didn't use the term restorative justice in those days, but that was the essence of the program. This is why the first programs at the local level were established in community action agencies intentionally located in minority communities in major metropolitan areas. Now, I think we can all agree, I hope we can all agree, that Spokane's history on racial justice isn't something to boast about in the context of the disparate treatment of and disproportionate harms experienced by Black and Brown communities. I think about this every time I drive I-90 through the heart of the old East Central neighborhood. I think about it every time I see the current trajectory of the North-South Freeway and the fact that it was not brought down the Shadle Quarter. I think about it when I see the disproportionate numbers of minority children in this community who are in the child welfare system. I think about it when I see the disproportionate numbers of Black, Brown, and other people of color who are charged with crimes or juvenile offenses and who are held in our jails in our juvenile correction facilities. Recent events remind us all too well. We need only look at the recent public outrage over the decision in the Vale case and Judge George Fearing's powerful dissent in that case. Now, I've read all the press coverage and statewide, here in Spokane and statewide, and I've read the entirely predictable responses from people in positional authority. If you have not read the dissent, and there's a link in the PowerPoint for you, if you have not read the dissent, I strongly encourage you to do so. It speaks for itself. So while much has changed for the good, many of the systems and practices that caused the creation of legal aid continue unabated, so much so that our state Supreme Court felt compelled to speak publicly about it in an open letter to the judiciary and the community at large on June 4, 2020. So what kind of problems do people experience? Well, in 2015, we published a study on the unmet civil legal problems of low-income people. There's a link in the blue that's a hyperlink to the study itself. Feel free to peruse it. It's quite detailed. It was conducted by Washington State University's Social and Economic Sciences Research Center under contract with us. What it told us is that despite significant new investments, especially, well, actually, what it told us was what's on the screen. 71% of low-income people experience one legal problem every year. If they have one, they averaged nine. And if they're a victim of domestic violence or sexual assault, they had 18. And they're all interrelated. You can just see how one major problem will spiral into a series of related problems. I tell the story of a former client in Spokane. Her name was Anna, and she was a DV victim. She was beaten up pretty badly. She ended up at Sacred Heart. She had a family law problem. She had to get a protection order. Those are two little problems. She had no credit because the credit cards were taken away by the abuser. She later got sued by a collection agency for uninsured coverage from the medical at Sacred Heart, and on and on and on. And then finally, at one of the hearings, she said, and I almost quote, "It's so unfair. He beat me up. He gets a lawyer. I have nobody." Legal aid is what fills the nobody slot. In recent years, in response to the study, the legislature has provided additional resources and created additional programs and assigned those to the Office of Civil Legal Aid. And we'll talk about the programs in a second. Yet, despite significant new investments, especially in the areas of child welfare representation and tenant defense, the chronic and continuing need for civil legal help documented in that study has only gotten worse. The COVID-19 pandemic and its echoes exacerbated both the substance and the number of legal problems experienced by low-income people. And funding hasn't kept up. In the unemployment insurance arena, you might remember how many people lost their jobs at the beginning of 2020 and how many people filed claims for unemployment insurance. Systemic failures across that system resulted in tens of thousands of unemployment insurance claimants being denied assistance and in need of legal representation at their hearings. The statewide unemployment law project, led here in Spokane by Juliana Rep, continues to be overwhelmed by demand, and the system faces a backlog of more than 30,000 cases as of now. Other areas of significant COVID impact include housing foreclosure, eviction defense, domestic violence, and access to necessary health care. All evidence confirms that the continuing harms caused by the pandemic have had and continue to have a grossly disproportionate impact on minority immigrant and other communities that lack consistent and meaningful access to services and support. This slide outlines the core areas of the legal aid program. What kinds of problems do we serve? Private and public housing, including tenant defense and foreclosure, family safety, domestic violence, sexual assault representation, access to health care, behavioral, and medical public benefits, problems relating to employment, worker safety, unemployment, consumer financial services, and education. Civil legal aid in Spokane. We have multiple programs in Spokane City and serving Spokane County, and they are focused in these areas of practice. We have a general basic civil legal aid program, which includes a statewide hotline, a statewide self-help resources center, and two primary providers, the Northwest Justice Project that operates out of an office on West Broadway, 1400 West Broadway, and the Spokane County Bar Association's Volunteer Attorney Program. We have now, the legislature in 2021 created what we call a civil public defense program for indigent tenants who are defendants in unlawful detainer or eviction cases. And there's a link in here to a whole bunch of information about client service numbers, and we'll get there. So we have a program here to run that. That's run by Northwest Justice Project and the Housing Justice Project, a new program here in Spokane. We have for tenants who have not yet had evictions filed against them but who are threatened with eviction, we have services as well that the legislature has funded, and that's run by the Northwest Justice Project, the Spokane Bar Volunteer Attorney Program, and the Housing Justice Project. We have a crime victims' legal aid program. We have legal aid dedicated to survivors of domestic violence. And here, we have a contract with the Spokane YWCA, and we also have a contract with the Northwest Immigrants Rights Project to provide services to survivors who need immigration assistance. We also, in the child welfare space, now are required to appoint counsel for legally free children, children who remain in foster care and subject to state jurisdiction six months following the termination of the rights, the legal rights of both of their parents. So we have a program here. We have two attorneys, two staff people who are working on that program, and we contract in that program with a range of very highly skilled private attorney practitioners and contractors. We have a restorative justice program. One of the, we just were visiting one of the lead entities in our restorative justice area. It's an organization called The Way to Justice. If you haven't been there, they're at 321 West Boone. If you haven't met them, Verla Spencer and Cam Zorzuzza and their team, it's a model by and for community-driven, community-led, community-accountable legal aid organization. It's, you know, one of our really shining examples of effective and meaningful assistance. So by the numbers, in 2022, all programs combined, 2,222 residents of Spokane County received legal assistance. We don't differentiate between city and county. The data point we use is Spokane County. 756 tenants had an attorney appointed for them in their case. And we do know that when you do have representation of counsel, and there's a data dashboard link in there as well, when you do have representation of counsel, and we know what the outcome is, more than 50% stay in their homes. They're not joining the unhoused. In Spokane County, the percentage of tenants appointed counsel who identify as non-white is 32%, which is substantially greater than that number in the general population. So this is another area where you have disparate harms experienced by people of color. And then, just generally, in the overall program, landlord tenant is nearing 60% of our cases, family safety, almost a quarter of our cases, consumer finance debt collection, almost 10% of the cases, and then all others. Here are a series of links that might be very helpful. We created a data dashboard. I don't know if I can click on it. Is there a way to click on? Oh, there is. This is... You may need to do it. But it's a comprehensive, oh, here it comes. As you can see, it's a comprehensive dashboard of data showing all of the information.
You stay by the mic, Jim.
It's a comprehensive. I can do it this way. Thank you. Dashboard, and I encourage you to take a lot, you know, a hard look. This is what we're doing. This is what's happening in your city and county, in this area of justice. And this, these numbers represent the Spokane County Bar Association's Volunteer Attorney Program and the Northwest Justice Project. So in closing, and let me say again, thank you for the opportunity to share. I'm really proud of this city. How do I get back to the PowerPoint? I guess I do that. I'm really proud of this city. On multiple occasions in the past, this council has taken a policy stand to promote and expand access to civil justice. I encourage you to continue to do so and to remind your elected representatives of the importance, state representatives, of the importance of civil legal aid in this community. They need to hear from you. They're strong. And let me just affirm that support for civil legal aid is truly bipartisan. Whether you talk to Senator Jeff Holy, whether you talk to Senator Shelley Short, whether you talk to Senator Andy Billig, or whether you talk to Tim Ormsby, all have and continue to strongly support meaningful access to the justice system. They get that without legal voice, there's no recourse. So thank you again, and I'm happy to receive any questions that you have.
Congressman Cathcart.
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation and all the work that you do. I think, you know, it's all really good and important stuff that we need to continue. What I'm wondering is, you really talked a lot about low-income and BIPOC tenants that you guys have supported. And I'm just wondering, is there any work that you do on the other side with low-income and BIPOC landlords?
No, our program by statute is required to only focus on tenant defense.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Jim, thanks for coming back home and for all that you do and giving us a glimpse. And all the links and things are in the packet that were sent out if you want to look at it. So take care. All right. I'd like to invite up Brad Siegel from Progressive Urban Management Associates to make his presentation. And we've got DSP Chair Stephanie Curran.
Brad and friends.
Yeah, yeah. And Emily, yeah, come on in.
Good morning, everybody. You know me as the CEO of the Public Facilities District, Stephanie Curran. I'm also the chair of the DSP Board this year. Apologies, I didn't get a chance to greet all of you this morning, but it's nice to see you, and thank you for having us and the opportunity to be together today. I am looking forward to the presentation. As we all know, our downtown has changed quite a bit in the last couple of years. And what happens downtown has impacts on all of the districts that you represent. So it's really important work that we're doing. So I'm going to have Emily, our president and CEO of the Downtown Spokane Partnership, tell you a little bit about the work and then introduce our presenters. Thank you.
Good morning, or I guess we're close to good afternoon. Council President, members of the council, thank you. It's hard to believe it is now officially 367 days in Spokane. So I think I heard I get to officially say I'm a Spokaneite now. But, you know, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. I had a chance to meet with each of you one-on-one when I first got here and with your staff and continue to collaborate. As you know, I came from downtown management. I've been in this industry for a long time, been a part of the International Downtown Association. And fortunately, when I came here, had the opportunity to look at where is downtown Spokane? And just like cities across the country, we are reevaluating how our visitors, how our businesses, how our users come and experience and interact with downtown. And what a better time than to bring in an industry expert like Progressive Urban Management Associates. And I want to say a big thank you to the DSP Board and the Bid Ratepayer Advisory Board who really supported bringing in this work. We, and as you will soon hear about our timeline and where we are in this process, we are in a process. We kicked this off at the end of 2022 and are excited to be able to share with you. Thank you for your participation. And I will let the show begin here with the experts, but I just want to say thank you again for the opportunity to be here.
Great, thanks, Emily. I'm Brad, Brad Siegel. We've met, met all of you, actually remotely. It's a pleasure to actually see you in 3D and to be in the council chamber on behalf of myself and my colleague, Yvette Freeman. We do want to express our gratitude for you taking the time today for us to come and present. So we've got about 20 minutes of information for you, and then we've got as much time as you still have on the agenda for any questions that pop up. In terms of what we wanted to cover, we did want to talk a little bit about national trends that we're seeing downtown. You may recall, we're based in Denver. We do work across the country. Both Yvette and myself have, our entire careers have been downtown-focused. So Yvette and I used to work with the Downtown Partnership in Denver 35 years ago. And over the last 30 years, our firm has worked in 300 cities, 38 states, mostly downtown-focused work. So we do track trends, and certainly coming out of the pandemic, it's shifted some things around in downtowns. Secondly, we do want to talk briefly about our process. This is a halftime report for the community. So we're about halfway through our process, and over the next several months, we'll be putting together recommendations for the partnership and for the bid in downtown. Also importantly, we wanted to report on our community engagement. We've had a fair amount of engagement. We've met with not only downtown stakeholders, but we had great response to a community online survey. I think several of you actually helped us push that through your networks. We appreciate that. And we did get 500 community voices in terms of what folks would like to see downtown moving forward. And then lastly, we'll end the presentation. We have four takeaways, sort of four big conclusions at this point, that then are springboards for our work moving forward. So I'll start on national trends impacting downtowns. And again, that's us. We're from Denver. We actually have a majority of our firm working on this project. So in addition to Yvette and myself, we also have a couple other colleagues that have been in Spokane. We were all here in February. I wanted to start with what we're hearing in downtown markets throughout the country. And we've been going through similar strategic planning processes in many cities. And when we go through a strategic plan, we do a survey similar to the community online survey that we did here. So what you're seeing on the slide were priorities from about a dozen downtowns, about 10,000 voices that were saying, this is important in my downtown. And we looked at before the pandemic, and then we looked at our work during and after the pandemic. So before the pandemic, many of the issues that are confronting many downtowns, including Spokane, were there. So you'll notice that improving safety was a top priority before the pandemic. Homelessness, particularly in the Western United States and in cities all up and down the coast, has been a challenge. Filling vacant storefronts, a priority. Ensuring downtown is equitable, diverse, and welcoming for everyone in the community, a top priority. And more housing for residents. We then compare that with what we've been hearing the last two or three years. So the pandemic did change many things in downtowns, and this comes through in our survey work. So what's happening here, this is another dozen communities. This is another 10,000 voices that we're adding to the surveys. And you can see that safety is paramount in downtowns that we're working on throughout the country. Filling vacant storefronts, again, more of a challenge post-COVID than before. The third one there didn't really exist before COVID. Who talked about return to work? That was not a thing that we talked about. So return to work and the office market and what's next is a top priority in cities. Homelessness continues to be there as well. And more support for small businesses and entrepreneurs really is increasingly becoming a focus in downtowns. We have a separate presentation. We do separate research. We've been following demographics and lifestyles that have been shaping downtowns for the last 15 years. And until 2020, the wind was in the sails of downtowns throughout the country. So we've been looking at what has changed. And we really felt the pandemic's been an accelerator of trends. It accelerated many things that were happening in cities. So these are five key trends that we've been looking at nationally. We're looking at in Spokane as we do our work. So retail, you saw many traditional retail concepts, pennies, for example, pull the plug early. But the opportunity for downtowns, and we see it in Spokane, is small, local, independent businesses in downtown areas. Office, we don't know if the jury's going to be out on office market for another three to five years in terms of return to work, but we're working with cities all over the country to rethink some of the office buildings. And do we convert them to residential? Are there other uses if we're not going to refill these buildings? Housing, which you've seen in Spokane over the last 10, 15 years, that continues as a trend and even accelerated to a degree. Younger demographics, people under 40, still very much attracted to being in downtown and living in downtown. Power of place, how do we use our public spaces? We, I mentioned we were here in February. I, we, the both of us have been blown away by the park, by the River Park here. That is a world-class asset. You know that. We've been experiencing that. So building around a central asset like that and other public spaces in downtown, how do we activate those spaces? And then equity and inclusion, which really has been accelerated over the last couple of years, not just the pandemic, but after the Floyd murder, we did see cities more focused on how are we going to make sure that downtown is welcoming to everyone in our community? Downtown really should be the living room of the city where everyone is welcome. So those are just some national trends that frame our work. I'm going to hand this to Yvette. We thought we would talk about just some basics, particularly for folks who are tuning in. I understand your meetings are televised. So for folks that are tuning in, we thought we'd spend a little bit of time just what is a bid, what is a downtown partnership, because that's what our focus is.
Thank you, Brett. Good afternoon and thanks again for allowing us to speak with you. First, I'm going to talk about business improvement districts, more commonly known as bids. They're very common in downtown. You have nearly 25. In Washington State, there are over 1,000 around the country. Bids are a source of funding for common area improvements and services. They are self-imposed and self-governed by those who pay, including residents, property, and business owners. What bids are not, bids do not supplant city services. They supplement city services. They do not lobby, but they do undertake research and/or education on projects and issues. And while the government has fiduciary oversight, bids are not considered part of the local government. With regard to partnerships like DSP, downtown partnerships are a best practice for, best practice model for managing day-to-day bid services. They're generally nonprofit organizations, C3 and C6, governed by a board of downtown stakeholders. They can be effective to leverage non-assessment revenues like memberships, sponsorships, and even grants. They advocate for policy positions on issues affecting downtown. Partnerships, downtown partnerships do not take positions on or fund candidates or individuals, and the employees are not of the bid or government, but independent nonprofit. Thanks, Brett, for advancing my slides. Now we're just going to talk about the timeline a little more as Brad mentioned. We're kind of in halftime, if you want to use a sports analogy. We expect to be wrapping up in a few months and finalizing things by the end of the summer. Next, we're going to talk about the community engagement information that we have available as a result of the opportunity to speak with community members and the respondents to the survey. So we met with more than 60 key stakeholders, including downtown property and business owners, DSP and bid boards, DSP staff, city council, and the mayor, city staff and partner organizations like STA. And then, as Brad mentioned, almost 500 responses to the online survey that we provided. I'm going to share some highlights from the survey, some strengths, some challenges, and then improvements. So I'll move through these pretty quickly. A strength certainly is that you're a regional cultural hub and have many reasons to come in downtown. As Brad said, we've just been amazed by the park, by the water rushing through. It's just, it is absolutely amazing. We've spent some time there. You have legacy employers. You have large amenities with a small-city feel, and we certainly heard that when we had conversations with folks. And that's special, along with the physical character and that you have a good mix of architecture with your historic buildings. You also have a strong network of bicycle and pedestrian facilities. Your transit access is great with incoming city line service and the regional bus system. And then you have these great higher education institutions that are located adjacent to downtown. With regard to challenges, as Brad highlighted, safety concerns, both perception and reality, more specifically, open drug use, property and violent crime, lack of police presence and slow response times have been concerned, the prevalence of unhoused individuals, concentration of services, and shelters adjacent to downtown, the lack of wraparound services, and then just challenges with mental health and addiction. Return to work and commercial vacancy, the vacant store storefronts, and as Brad mentioned, return to work was not something we were talking about a few years ago. Lack of diversity, diverse representation in civic organizations and institutions, and a missing variety in business and restaurant offerings also. Parking, the cost, safety in surface lots, lack of lighting, and then physical connections, the need to better connect across the Spokane River. And then surface parking and the gaps that are created as a result of that parking. And then lastly, the improvements. To ensure that downtown is clean and safe, of course, that's fundamental. To reduce nuisance behaviors, address property and violent crime, ensure the downtown environment is consistently cleaned and well-maintained. To provide additional services for resource and resources for the unhoused population. To encourage infill development, maybe those vacant, those vacant lots and other areas that are underutilized. Recapture the pre-pandemic vibrancy. Improve collaboration among civic partners and downtown initiatives is critical to ensure that everyone is working, working together for the common good. And then increase housing options and residence in downtown, which of course will add to the vitality, because you've got people down here and they take ownership of their neighborhood. Thanks again for your time. I'm going to hand it back to Brad.
Thanks, Yvette. So what Yvette just went through is really the intelligence we gained from February when we were in sight, and then the subsequent phone calls, including phone calls with many of you. Then we tested that with the community. We wanted to get a sense of, hey, does the community align with what we're hearing from the downtown? So the online survey, which was distributed through a variety of means in March and April, I mentioned we got about 500 responses. Pretty good distribution of responses. Majority identified as Spokane area residents. Forty-four percent identified as downtown employees, which is really important these days to really get a sense of how the employees feel about downtown. And about 15% were downtown business or property owners in terms of that response. Got great age demographic responses. These kinds of surveys, they tend to skew a little old, but this one, not so much. So we got great response in the 35 to 49 age demographic, which is always a goal for us. This is how those 500 respondents responded to a question that said, give us three words to describe downtown today. And it doesn't paint a great picture. I will say, it's not too different from what we're seeing in other cities. But I think for those who are from Spokane, it's disheartening that downtown is painted in this way. So homeless, dirty, riverfront, parking, unsafe, there's potential. But these are how the words that our 500 respondents use to frame the condition of downtown today. Then we asked folks, okay, what's gotten better, what's gotten worse last five years? So the way this works is the green bars are these things have gotten better, the red bars, these things have gotten worse. In terms of what's better, parks, plazas, dining options, arts and In terms of what's better, parks, plazas, dining options, arts and cultural activities? What slipped? Safety, cleanliness, and the parking experience. On this question, we probed on our client, the downtown Spokane partnership and the bid, to get a sense of how respondents feel about their services and the work they're doing. And again, the green is they're doing a good job, the red is, is not such a good job. Also, what's interesting in this one, because it's a broad-based survey, there's a lot of gray, and the gray is don't know, don't know what they're doing in this area. So in terms of what's good, streetscape improvements, that's things like flower baskets and banners, those types of things, decorative elements. Advocacy, office recruitment and retention, interestingly, is viewed as something that they're doing well at. Not so good. The retail recruitment and retention actually was the number one where community, community members would like to see improvement. And we think this is a reflection and concern about empty storefronts within the downtown. Transportation and parking, and then social outreach as it relates mostly to, to the unhoused population downtown. We did probe more on the notion of safety and also addressing homelessness. They're not necessarily entirely related, but they are perceived as related by many, many in the public and many in downtown. So we gave folks a list of eight or nine solutions, and we asked people to prioritize them. What's your first priority? What's your second priority? Number one was to advocate for a variety of solutions and policies from government nonprofit partners to reduce homelessness. We're very aware that the city and your partners are actively working on this every day. Secondly, to strengthen enforcement on crimes. And three is to deploy more social and mental health workers and unhoused outreach in downtown. This is a response many cities working in right now are really doubling down on is how can we get more mental health workers deployed to folks who need the service? All right. Couple of you said, give us some good news. So here's the good news moving into the future. We asked again, moving into the future, 2030, what do you want downtown to be? And the 500 respondents gave us three words, and this, this is the goal. This is where we want to be. We want it to be safe, clean, vibrant, fun, beautiful, and accessible. We said beyond clean and safe, because one of the things we're trying to do with the partnership and the bid, we're trying to help them focus. Focus on what would be most effective for the partnership and the bid to deliver services. We are concerned they're spread too thin, and we, we do this a lot in our work. We really help organizations focus on where you're going to be impactful. So beyond clean and safe, assuming that ambassadors, clean teams continue, what, what are we going to do? Retail recruitment and retention was a top priority. Interestingly, urban design and planning, we don't run to many communities where that's a, that's a top priority. But the notion of parks and green space, alley improvements, public art, all resonated here. Events and programming, transportation and parking. I will say on the parking issue, which I know has been a top issue of concern in Spokane, the survey responses skewed by one demographic. And folks over 65 really pushed the parking issue higher. Respondents under 65, it was a much lower priority for them. This response should be of concern to actually everyone in the room. So to achieve your vision for downtown, how important will implementing the following programs and services be over the next five to 10 years? And we gave them a list of seven or eight improvements. We said, pick one. And the dominant one, 68%, was enhancing safety and reducing nuisance behavior downtown. Why I said everyone in the room should be concerned about this is that, remember, only 15% of these respondents are downtown property or business owners. So 85% of the respondents here are community members. Throughout the community, there's, there's concern about, again, the two issues of enhancing safety and reducing homelessness. Also, attracting more retail and activating parks showed up in the survey. Last survey response, then I'll end here with some takeaways from all this information. So to achieve your vision for downtown, how important will implementing the following be? These are, many of these ideas are from the downtown plan that was just completed a couple of years ago. So we've been building on the work that's been done here. We reviewed the downtown plan and we said, hey, we're surveying the community. Let's test those recommendations from the downtown plan and see how they resonate with folks. So folks wanted to improve the pedestrian accessibility down here. They want a walkable downtown. Actively pursue redevelopment of the service parking lots. Folks want to see more, more development, more density, more housing. And that's that last one there is increase housing options and residence. Housing options for a variety of folks. My understanding Spokane, like my city, like many Western cities, that we have an affordability crisis here. So when we're thinking about downtown housing, are we thinking about a variety of types and price points? So I'll end with some key takeaways, and then I'll leave the time management up to council in terms of how much time we've got for questions. So key takeaway number one, we do see that down, and I don't know if this provides comfort for really anyone, but we do see that downtown Spokane is encountering many of the same challenges and has many of the same opportunities that we're seeing in our work, certainly throughout the West. So most downtowns are experiencing similar increases in crime, homelessness, vacancy. Also, many downtowns are, have opportunities coming out of this, this time to create a more mixed-use environment downtown. That really was the crux of, of the downtown plan that you completed a couple of years ago. How do we turn downtown into more of a neighborhood? So more housing, active storefronts, enhanced public spaces. And again, with that River Park, that is, again, such a world-class amenity, that alone should be enhanced value for anyone who wants to build housing or, or to live down here. The challenges, though, the first challenges, and, and this is a big part of our message, not only to the community, but our message yesterday, we met with the DSP and the Business Improvement District boards. These challenges in terms of crime, homelessness, commercial vacancy, they really require partnership and collaboration and partnership between public and private sector, which leads us to our second takeaway. In talking to downtown stakeholders and talking to several of you, we are not finding the same collaborative spirit that we find in other communities that are facing these challenges. And it's not about ideology, it's about problem solving. So one of our messages to Spokane and to our client is we really need to focus on collaborative problem solving moving forward. We do think there's a starting place for what we're calling a reset. And it may sound kind of basic. It's something that Spokane, our understanding, has not had, and it's standard with a business improvement district. It's called a base level of service agreement. And what that is, is the city establishes essentially, this is the services we would provide downtown if there was no bid. So if there's no bid, the city would do X, Y, and Z. And then what that does, it provides the property and business owners that are paying in the bid. It gives them the assurance that they truly are paying for enhanced services. As you all know, that's part of the Washington statute, that a bid is for enhanced services. So this is standard. It can be an informal framework. We have had discussions with city staff. There has been some progress on that, and we think it's a good building block moving forward. And happy to take questions on that if you're curious. So our third takeaway is we're going to have all sorts of recommendations for our client, and I'll talk about those in a minute. But we also have a higher-level recommendation that the partnership, the bid, the city really employ a collaborative, market-driven, problem-solving approach moving forward. And that's what we're seeing in other cities, again, despite differences of opinion. Folks are rolling up their sleeves and they're finding that common ground, and they're being impactful. So having said all that, we are going to be working feverishly with the partnership and the bid. I shared this with several of you in our phone calls. We, we feel that the business model for the downtown partnership and the bid is woefully out of date. The organizations were created in the 1990s. They have not been substantially updated since then. So we're working in a variety of capacities, really to help deliver to the property and business owners, to the community, to you all. We want to deliver a state-of-the-art downtown partnership and bid that can be a strong partner moving forward. So what does that mean? That means we are concerned, we actually are concerned about the contract the bid has, and that thing is, looks a lot like it did 20 years ago. There, there are 10 different activities that this bid is charged with doing, and honestly, no organization of this scale is going to be able to do that. So we are looking at what are the three or four areas of focus for the partnership moving forward, and how do we really get them to excel in three or four things instead of maybe falling short in 10 or more? That may require coming back to amend that contract at some point. Structural changes to the bid. It's a little unorthodox, the way this thing was engineered. And, you know, if you're curious in the Q and A, we can get into the peculiarities of bid engineering. But, but the assessment methodology is, is complex. The administration is cumbersome. We do not know of another organization like, like the partnership that is actually tracking 1,300 leases to figure out what their square footage is, to, to figure out an assessment. We feel we can simplify this and bring better practices to the overall engineering of the bid. It's honestly, if I was going to characterize it in a word, it's kind of clunky. And that, you're not, you're not getting the optimum performance from the bid, nor, nor does it run as efficiently as it could. Sorry, but that's, we just think the bid is a little clunky in the engineering. Financial analysis, we were asked to look at bid expansion. I know this is something that has been talked about, is expanding the bid to the south, south of the railroad tracks to the highway. And in terms of that, we've done a financial analysis. The bid under zone two or zone three assessments does not raise sufficient revenue to actually support the services that would be needed in that area. So if it is to expand, we feel a couple considerations need to happen. One, is there an opportunity for additional revenue support so they can actually deliver the services? And secondly, we've met with a handful of property owners, but we want to get more property owner consensus that indeed that would be desirable, that they would want the bid to expand. So we're looking at bid expansion. We do, parenthetically, we do think bid expansion to the north actually would make a lot of sense as well. A lot of changes on the north of the river. And the, 30 years later, that north boundary is a little arbitrary, so we think that could be tighter with the development on the north. And then lastly, the strategic plan for the partnership itself is going to, I believe it's the first time they've gone through an exercise like this. So it's going to align the organization around clear goals, objectives, focus that supports the bid and really defines their, their lanes moving forward. So with that, I know we, we provide a lot of information today, and we'll defer to council in terms of questions and how much time you want to allocate for that.
Thanks so much, Brad. We'll see if you have any questions out there or comments. Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, I have, I have one, because one of the things we, we do here regularly is about collaboration, and I think everybody's genuine desire is collaboration. In the cities that you've studied, how many are also in the city Spokane's position where, while we all serve in nonpartisan positions, we have our ideological leanings, right? And so, whereas some would see a difference in the ideologies of the council and the mayor's office, how many cities that you've studied have that unique position?
I would say most cities in this country right now have got differences in ideology between a downtown business community and elected leadership. And it works both ways, honestly. I mean, we've worked in blue cities and red states. We've also worked in cities like Berkeley, Santa Monica, Boulder, very progressive cities that have business communities that, that think differently. But I'll, I'll tell you, they've all found common ground. They've all found common ground, and they've said, look, you're going to, we may disagree. We may disagree from time to time. It's going to be okay to disagree. But in terms of the top priorities and solving some of our, you know, community challenges, we got to work together. And we see that in Spokane. We see some great opportunities where there could be collaboration moving forward on many of these issues that we've highlighted.
A follow-up to then, to that then, if it's not exactly political ideology, because we've seen this work many other places with that same, with that same issue, do you have an opinion on Spokane and, and where we're at when it comes to collaboration, what our challenge is?
Yeah, well, and we tried to frame it in our presentation. We're urging our client, and we would urge council to consider a reset. You know, let's just reset the relationship. There, there's, and some of this goes beyond these folks. I mean, the, the partnership and the bid, they, you know, they, they, there's opportunities there. You've got new leadership, you know, a board and staff. There are also just individuals in and around the downtown community, and some of you have shared correspondence with some of these individuals that are not them. So we think the partnership and the bid, by professionalizing, by updating the business model, by having a new sort of approach to collaborative problem solving. You know, we're from outside, we're naive, what do we know? But we think the timing is good. There's new leadership here. We know, congratulations, councilman, I mean, we know there's going to be some shuffling around here. It might be a great opportunity just to reset the relationship.
Councilmember Sappanen.
Yeah, thank you for this presentation and all this information. I was wondering if you can talk more to the difference between advocacy and lobbying, because I think that can kind of get blended between the two.
Yeah.
So I hear you saying advocacy, but how is that different?
Yeah, it's a really good question. And for those of you, I know several of you on the podium are involved in nonprofits, and you probably deal with this all the time. So when, if you're dealing with a C3 or a C6, you always need to make this distinction, as is the partnership, you know, they're a C6. So, and the bid, first of all, the bid does not lobby, really should not advocate. The bid needs to be separate from those activities. The downtown Spokane partnership has license to advocate and actually can lobby. So how we make that distinction in other cities, and, and again, we, we tried to address it on the slide, is on policies and issues, a downtown partnership is going to provide an opinion on behalf of their constituents. And sometimes we're going to agree, sometimes we're going to disagree. What we want to make sure, though, moving forward, and I don't know if this has necessarily happened here, but, but I know, I know some things in some towns get personalized. We want to make sure that no one is messing around with candidates or individuals, that that is not what an organization does. So advocacy to us is education. Lobbying is also encouraging votes. That, that's, that's fair game from a downtown partnership, off limits from a bid, and we're going to make that distinction in this plan moving forward.
Anything about this?
No.
All right. Another question that I had, as you talked a lot about the, the community survey was about perception. I don't know if there was a way to ask it or disaggregate the idea of the perception from what is publicly stated, what is in the news, what is even from many downtown property owners about a perception of safety versus individual experiences of safety. And I think in Spokane, especially where people tend to be, like closer to the park, is different than where that expansion area between the train tracks and I-90 would be. And so I'm wondering, is there a way that you were able to follow up on that information to see if it was more their perception of it or their actual experience of safety?
Yeah, councilman, there, there is somewhat in the survey. I, I mean, there's open responses, and, and we did dig into the data, and we do have a fairly detailed analysis that gets into that. I will also just say from experience, from doing this many, many years and doing this in this environment in other Western cities, it's all of the above. So there's reality, you know, there's day-to-day reality that some of your, your small businesses down, particularly in storefronts and small businesses that are coping with. And some of the employees are coping with downtown, some of the people live downtown. So there's a day-to-day reality to this. There's also a narrative that starts to get ginned up, and that narrative can get ginned up from a whole variety of things. It is common that media will do that. Sometimes if, if the, if the spirit of cooperation is lacking, you know, we can gin it up ourselves without even knowing it. So I, I, my experience tells me that all of that's happening in Spokane. And yes, we've got real day-to-day problems. I think we also have a narrative that maybe outweighs what the actual reality is as well.
And a follow-up on that, is there a role for the bid to play encountering that narrative while also advocating for their needs? Because Because it could appear as you're advocating for your needs, that you're kind of propelling that negative narrative.
Yeah, and I, we've talked about it. And again, some of this is under the control of, because again, individuals can do what they want. And there are some individuals that are kind of off the wall on this stuff, and that's, that's not helping. But the partnership in particular, again, remember, partnership will advocate, bid will deliver services, that's something we're going to, that's going to be a mantra on their wall, you know. Bid, deliver services, DSP can advocate. But the nature of the advocacy, yeah. And that's, that's why we purposely are calling for collaborative problem solving here. That's the notion of advocacy here. We know we got some problems, but let's, let's roll up our sleeves, find again. I mean, we can do it in Berkeley, we can do it in Santa Monica, we can do it in Spokane. Let's find that common ground where we can actually be impactful.
Do you have another one?
Yeah. So we've, we've been hearing about, you know, bid expansion and that, and you mentioned something I thought was, you know, interesting to hear about the bid expanding north, you know, potentially across the river. Can you talk a little bit more about that?
Sure.
And why it sort of makes sense versus maybe expanding south?
Yeah. So there are several things you look at when you look at a, I should have mentioned in our intro, we've been working with bids. I mean, in fact, Yvette and I used to work in a bid, we worked in the downtown partnership in Denver. The last 30 years, we've helped to, we've helped to create, engineer 85 bids in midsize and large cities all over the country. So we, we have immersed ourselves in bids. There are a few things you look for when you look at expanding a bid. One is function. Can the services, do they make sense? So you look at the function, do the services make sense? And we think of both areas, north and south, they make sense. Secondly, you look at the revenue, because the reality is when you have a bid, you're raising revenue from real estate. And there's a couple of dimensions there. One is not just do we have enough revenue to deliver the services, but we also don't want to raise a fee that's going to stress out small businesses. So we want to be real careful with that. And then fourth, is it something the property owners support and embrace? So, you know, north of the river is thriving. It's really impressive what this community, what probably you all have been doing in terms of the facilities up there. It's really impressive place. There are a lot of thriving businesses. Our sense is that that, that could, that could probably make more sense. There's also more density, there's more development of higher density, there's residents up there that could all benefit from services. So we haven't done the math yet on the north part. It's just occurred to us that that's something we should do. On the south part, we have done the math, and again, the, there's just not as much real estate. And also, we're also concerned about rent impacts if we're going to create an assessment in that south part of downtown.
Yeah, I, I like the idea because as we're talking about other things that, in the survey that came in, talking about activating our public spaces and our parks and those kinds of areas, I think that, you know, looking at that expansion north could make a lot of sense. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wilkerson, and then we need to move on.
Yeah, yeah. So thank you. So looking at the data, the demographics of the response to the survey, 55% were women and then 78% was white. So as this community continues to evolve racially, I guess I'm concerned about how do we expand and get those voices? We're talking about more unique shops downtown. I think those would be culturally diverse shops that would spark the interest more in Spokane downtown. So I guess I'd be, as you work with the DSP and the bid, what would be their path forward? And how are they collaborating with the other communities of color that could help them achieve that success?
And councilman, we're going to explore that with them. I would also add to what you just said, there's just market opportunity. There is enormous market opportunity in this town. And downtown typically should be that area where we celebrate everyone and everyone has the ability to start a business and different cultures are represented. We did get some feedback in the survey too, about different missing niches in retail and restaurants that some of the diverse cultures in this town, you know, could help fill. So we'll, we'll work with them on strategies and our intention is that's part of the strategic plan.
All right. I'll give you one more.
Just want to thank you for the presentation, really good information, really appreciate it. And thanks to the board members from DSP and the bid for coming down and being a part of this. So thank you.
Counsel, again, thank you. We often seek this opportunity, particularly halftime, you know, we don't want to be the consultant that brings you some plan and you didn't even see it. So to, to have this opportunity at halftime. And then also, we plan to be back late summer. And if timing works, before we cook the plan, it would be great to, to present where we think we're going.
Thank you. Thanks so much for coming.
Thank you.
All right. Matt Boston.
I'm going to try to go super quick so you can all have lunch.
We're not, you'll be back again, right?
I will be back so many times, you will get.
Great.
We already are.
Can you say that into the microphone, please?
I will be back so many times.
Okay, so this is conversation number two that we're talking about. The highlighted topics that we were supposed to talk about was kind of overall solutions as well as starting the homelessness conversation that we were introducing. I've had a myriad of questions from several of you over the last week since I presented last. So I wanted to touch on a couple of those questions because I think that they're important as we're kind of moving forward into these deeper discussions. Like I said, I'll be here several times, so the reason why I think is important. Real quick, I went really quickly over some forecasting figures last week. I know that it's a lot of numbers. I know it's a lot to digest when I'm throwing out numbers. And I just wanted to touch on why it is that we're looking at these forecasting and why the seven of you should really be concerned with it. City council, you know, you, you are the ones that are in charge of the budget at the end of the day. You pass the budget, you review it, you have to make changes if there's an overspend or there is an underspend, you're the ones that review the reserve balance changes. So I think keeping an eye on the budget and where it's going in relationship to your budget is hugely important because you have determined what your priorities are in that budget, and that should be the guiding document that the organization as a whole is setting forth on. And that should be their map for the year. So when you're going over budget or under budget, it's a reflection on the priorities that you have instilled on the organization and how we're adjusting to that. Additions to and reductions from the budget need to flow through council. So SBOs, as you know, need to flow through you. And if you're not reviewing the forecasts on a, on a regular basis, we're going to continue looking at 11th hour SBOs and scrambling to find the money that we have over the past two years. So the past two years, we've had significant SBOs as it relates to capital, as it relates to overtime, as it relates to collective bargaining agreements. These are all things that we've scrambled to find the money over the last two years, but doing that is not a sustainable solution. We have, we have tapped into the reserves, as I showed last week, to a negative balance if you include the unrealized gains and losses. Even with just cash balance as it is, the reserve balances, the, you know, the flexible, the unallocated reserve balance is at a very staggering low number, to the point where I'm seeing it that it won't be able to absorb the, the negative variances that I'm seeing in the 2023 year. So reductions in one-time funds are, for ongoing expenditures leave city open to large financial risk. It also relates right back to our ratings. I mean, we talked about this the other day, you know, this is going to be the first time in, in several years that we are going to be reporting a negative unallocated reserve number. That may impact things as we move forward, and we're going to have poor cash balances. So we don't have cash, we don't have a sustainable set of cash for our ongoing bills. So that is, is something that you need to be cognizant of as, as we're looking and we see kind of those blinking red screen alerts as we're moving forward through the year. Forecasting, what do we need to know? What do we need to be watching on? Revenues, so revenues, again, I touched on this again last week, just saying that we, we really have a predictive business model. As it relates, you know, about just over 80% of our, our revenue comes from taxes, that we have a pretty good grasp on what that is. Property tax, we know, I mean, we've calculated it before we go into the year of how much we're going to collect. There's no variance there. Business tax, inter-fund and sales taxes are going to be the ones that have a little bit of fluctuation. For example, you know, the revenues for, the revenues for sales tax numbers, you know, we, we put a pretty conservative year-over-year growth from 2022 to 2023 at just over 3% with the alarm of, hey, we know things are going to go, we know things are going to slow down. At this point in time, we've received something from administration which was presented to you by Tanya Wallace, saying that not only are we going to meet the 3%, but we're also going to make an additional 1% in the sales tax numbers. Just this morning, we saw a number from, we saw the sales tax number that we are below, we are 1% below from where we were at this year. So that just should show you that while we can, we can technically over-budget our sales tax, that will impact your reserve balance at the end of the year. So as you dip into the reserve balance for whatever it may be during the middle of the year for capital expenses or whatever it is, you're going to have, you're going to be left with less money from that negative variance at the end of the year if you don't hit your revenue numbers. And likewise, if your expense numbers are below as well. And that's where we're pacing. So that, that is very, very important to look at on a, on a monthly basis, not just once a year, not just twice a year. We need to be looking at it and adjusting those things every single month, which is something that I do pretty regularly. So, and the other question that came out was forecasting. You're throwing all these numbers at me, how in the world do you get to this forecasting number? And I just want to briefly go through it and show you where I'm looking at on things. And oh, Ken Freeman gave me this handy laser pointer. So this is just the general fund salary line item, 5100. So salaries and wages for general fund. Down here, the $78,879,000 number is what the, the current budget, adjusted budget is for 2023. As we can see, as simple as seeing that it is lower than the 2022 actual numbers that came in of $79,274,000.
So Matt, you should point it because I can't follow your finger.
Okay. I'm sorry, it's, it's a little light. So that $79,274 directly relates to these numbers in column A that are the actual numbers that went out from last year. Column B right here is showing what the reported numbers are for the months of January through April. As we can see, just from versus prior year in, in column C here, we know that we are overspending what we spent last year by $1.8 million just in salaries from last year. So we know that the 2022 overall budget is less than last year, yet we've already spent over $1.8 million versus last year. So that's not saying, hey, you know, we're going to meet within our budget because our budget has increased this year. Our budget is decreased from our actual expenditure from last year, and we've already spent a six-figure or a seven-figure number, seven-figure number over our budgeted expenditures. So that's, that's what I look at right away and say, okay, this is going to be a problem. So if I extrapolate that out.
Matt, before, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to ask, is there any reason to believe that this is an anomaly in the first few months and that there would be something different in future months? Anything that gives you that reason to believe that?
Nothing that gives me that reason.
There wasn't a big back pay or something like that?
No, 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 not in any of, so there's, there's some back pays that happen that you'll see. So for example, that 60, or that $6.5 million that's highlighted on the far right in column H is a number that was attributed to the 2021 numbers because as you can see, this number, $7.4 million in 2022 October, that's when we paid our retro payment for police. So you have to adjust your, your expectations based on what's happening. You have to pull out those one-time expenditures. As it relates to this year, there is no sort of anomalies that are happening within the first four months, this year or last year. So if you're looking at it, you know, the, the numbers weren't artificially down low in 2022 and strangely high in 2020, or in 2023, it's, it's pretty much standard business as usual. So that shows it being, again, $1.8 million over. Now, the way that I extrapolate that out for the rest of the year is over in column I, I look at prior year versus current year for what the average is over last year. And I say, okay, this average right here of overage is roughly 8%. Now, yes, it could go down, we could spend less, but in reality, knowing what we know from the quantitative side, we know that there is no strategies in play that reduces that. So it's, it's reasonable to use the 8% average right here as extrapolating it out from the prior year. So this, this number right here takes this times 8% for the expectation of what we're going to be using for the next year. Just those salaries alone, again, and this is just, just talking about projections, shows a overage of $5.4 million. Now, I know that there's some other ideas out there of saying, okay, well, we're just going to take a small fraction of it and we're going to straight-line it across the entirety of the year. The reason that I don't do that is because we are very cyclical in our, in our nature of business. We know when things ebb and flow. We also know that, you know, these months right here, this is July, this is December, those are three pay period months. So they jump up obviously in certain, in certain months. So I've always used this, this is a handoff from Tim Donovan and Gavin Cooley that also used this for years. I, I find it to be very, very accurate over my time while I've been here. Even when I was at the state, I was using something very similar. So I just wanted to give you an idea of how this is calculated and where I get to those numbers.
And these numbers, do they include future potential contract increases?
They do not. They do not. And they also include the 5% that we have right now within our budget as the theoretical number that we're going to be using.
Okay. For police?
For, for police. That's the, that's the only, that's the only expired bargaining unit contract right now. So we're, we're putting a 5% increase in there and we're already absorbing those savings. So if there does become a, if we do resolve that contract, you can tie another 5% onto these.
So we've used that in, we're over $1.8 million using that even though we haven't paid it yet.
Yes.
We're going to have to pay it.
So add 5% to each one of those numbers that are going to be paid, well, not, not overall, because this is, again, this is general fund wide, but police is the lion's share of that one in this one.
And then just barring any changes, in the meantime, what are you projecting that we would have left in our unallocated reserves?
Right now, if, right now, I think, I think my projection just from a cash balance at hand for unallocated reserves is about $7 million. But again, remember, I'm leery of that, of that number because A, it includes unrealized gains and losses. So if you have a fire sale and you need to sell some of your investments to actually have the money on hand, you're in a challenging situation. And then B, it, it assumes that, well, it doesn't assume, it is the fact that the contingent and the revenue stabilization reserve accounts are not funded to what they're recommended to be. So right now, we are beneath the GFOAC minimum requirement of two months of funding, even if you don't even talk about unrealized gains and losses. So putting that aside, that is, that's going to be the challenge. And I know we're tight on time, so I'm going to move pretty quick, but if you need me to stop, I'm happy to.
Can I stop?
Yeah.
You, you had a, a slide back, you don't have to go back there, but it showed taxes, licenses and that sort of thing. And in the past, we used to have a dedicated person or people who would check to make sure that business licenses were paid for, everything was kosher. And I don't think that's happening right now. So I think we're leaving money on the table because we are not checking to see if businesses are up to date on paying their business licenses or some of the, the other taxes and fees that we're doing. There's nobody, to my knowledge, checking on that right now. So we may be leaving, now I know it's, we're looking under all the seat cushions. So we may be leaving, now I know it's, we're looking under all the seat cushions, right?
Yeah.
It's, it's probably pennies when we're thinking about it, but, but when you look at, for example, the, the taxes on landlines.
Right.
Okay? Those are going down because people are ditching their landlines. But some of those, Comcast or Verizon, whatever, aren't necessarily paying their stuff on time.
Right. And, and, and I do know that we did an audit of that several years ago, prior to me starting, and, and we did recover, we did get a chance to recoup some of those funds.
But I don't know where they are now.
And that is something, we don't know where they are right now. From my understanding, there was somebody, this was the treasury manager's previous responsibility. I believe the deputy treasurer, I, I think that's under their responsibilities, don't quote me on that, but I believe that, that they have absorbed that, that Chris Johnson has absorbed those responsibilities. But I can dig deeper into it and I, and I can't really speak to.
I just want to know if it's getting done.
Yep, yep, definitely. Okay, so forecasting, what if we ignore it? Again, we, we've made abrupt corrections by historically supplanting reserve and/or one-time funds into the budget at, at the 11th hour. And in reality, the 11th hour, the last two years in a row, we've done it in November, and it's, it's, it's a shock to the system. Again, this is going to be a problem if we wait for it this year, because if we have a negative variance in our actual annual budget for this year, plus the small amount of reserves that we have, it could be very, very problematic to our general fund unallocated reserves, let alone our contingency and revenue stabilization reserves. And then, you know, the high level is the annual budget becomes less of a guiding document. I mean, what is, if you're continuously putting more money into the budget on ongoing expenses, you're using one-time funds for ongoing expenses, what is the point of having an annual budget? It no longer becomes the guiding principle, it becomes something that you put into a drawer and then you don't really think about and you spend how you need to spend. Unfortunately, but truly, we're, we're not in a private enterprise where we can create more widgets and therefore pay for the overtime that we need to pay for. If we're going to pull on revenue levers, they are long levers to pull and they take a long time to actually get into play. And then lastly, we stray away from our budgeting principles. There's, there's, you know, I think six or seven budgeting principles that are within the first few pages of every single budget that we've passed. And three of them are do not use one-time, or one-time revenues will only be used to cover one-time costs. We're breaking that again and again. Ongoing costs should not be greater than ongoing revenues. Again, maintain an adequate level of reserves and support a strong bond rating. Again, it's, it's, it's problematic when we continually push more money out of those reserves by, by covering those ongoing expenses. So the possible solutions, I, I think we need to, I don't want to go too far down this road because we need to have the, the conversations of homelessness as well as public safety kind of all under the umbrella of saying, okay, what are all the challenges that we have before we decide solutions? But here are some of the solutions and, and the challenges that we have. You know, if, if we want to increase our expenses by doing a levy lid lift on property taxes, that needs to go to the ballot. That's going to take some time. I, I think from my understanding, we can do a levy lid lift no later than November for the next fiscal year, but it's, it's a discussion.
But it'd have to get approved pretty soon.
It'd have to get approved very, very quickly. So that needs to be a discussion that we're having now instead of saying, okay, yeah, I wish I would have done it six months ago because now we're out of cash. Yes.
I got it, okay. Two things, I have two concerns. My first concern is when, and I'm going to ask this again, I know you can't answer it, but I, somebody will hear me. When is council going to sit down with the administration and talk about these issues?
These, yep.
Because this is scary. Second, what I'm most concerned about is what information was given to the public during these budget workshops that were out in the community? And we're, we're talking, the administration's talking this, council's talking this. There's no discussion that we need, we need to be looking at this stuff as a, as a whole entity. And I know you don't have the answers to that, but.
Yeah, I don't have a, a whole lot of, I mean, I could touch on a little bit. I, you know, as for when we're going to hear, we're inviting, we have several study sessions laid up for the next month and a half for this supplemental budget. So we, we are going to be inviting departments. Now we'll go through the schedule again and we'll talk to city administrator Johnny Perkins as well as the mayor, the CFO, and see what the interest is there. If not, we'll continue the conversation. And then secondarily, for the, the community forums that they're having, my understanding is that they're more of a listening session of what the priority is. I think it's an attempt to do a, a community-based priority budgeting. It's, it's kind of a step one, but I, I don't know how much we're talking about the, the alarms that are going off.
The alarms are, that, that's what's scaring me.
Right.
Because.
They, they all impact the public.
Exactly.
I mean, they all, the public is our customers and these all impact our customers.
And the public needs information, they need to know this, and we all need to be working together to address it. So thank you for this.
Yep. So I'm just curious, levy lid lift, so when we, when the council on an annual basis does the 1%, we're told it generates around 600,000-ish.
Yep, yep.
So to capture 6 million dollars-ish.
Yep.
What sort of property tax increase would we have to be talking about?
Off the top of my head, I wouldn't, I mean, I, I could break those numbers down from a household perspective. I think that would be the, the easiest way to do it is to break it down on a household perspective and an overall, because what you do as, when you're looking at the levy, right, you're looking at the assessed value of all of the property within the area, right? And you're saying, okay, as a percentage of that, I'm going to take, I, I need to get this much money. And so to get to, down to a granular, granular level, I'll, I'll have to do a little bit of work, but I'm happy to bring that to you.
Thanks.
Matt?
Yes.
Just one thing, we, you were talking about SBOs and I, I thought at the beginning of the year, because we were, we've been talking about this issue for a long time, at the beginning of the year, we all agreed that these SBOs, these one-off SBOs that were coming forward needed to stop.
And they have.
And they have.
Yeah, they have.
Okay.
Yeah.
So when you're talking about the SBOs that were one-offs, you're talking about last year.
I'm talking about the, yeah, historically, the last couple of years, but also I'm more talking about the 11th hour SBOs of saying, okay, we know where we're trending. We, we absolutely have a firm grasp on what, again, even if you were to say ju- just looking at last year's numbers and this year's numbers, knowing that we're beating those numbers substantially and that our budget this year is less.
Yes.
That is problematic. So that is just the, the most basic of math to say, okay, if I'm over several million within the first four months, that is problematic and leading to a negative variance.
So we all have to remind each other then, when it comes to the 11th hour and they come to us, it's sorry.
Well, and I think that that was the, the reason for council member Cathcart's supplemental budget is to say, okay, how do, how do we adjust these things so that we aren't just surprised on these in November as we're also trying to pass a 2020, you know, a next fiscal year budget so that we can strategically look at it, move budget around as we, as we see fit before that's a problem? Because again, if it's just led up to, left up to the unallocated reserves, it could be pretty problematic if our revenue numbers are bad for 2023 and our expenses are high for 2023.
I would also add that in years past, we had more of a handle as a council on the budgets of the individual departments. And I feel like we're totally in the dark about what the different departments are doing. I don't know about you guys, but I just, it's like a mystery because we, we don't get any updates, we don't know what, what is going on with the departments.
Fully agree, completely agree.
I was just going to say, we're trying to pay this year, we had also agreed we were going to try to replenish our reserves, which we don't have a penny to put in that pot.
Right.
For this year and probably not next year either. So that's a concern for us because we have nowhere to go.
Right.
Other than a fire sale.
Other than a fire sale, yeah. I mean, it's, it, it makes it challenging and that, again, that's why forecasting and accurate forecasting and constant review of that is so important. I mean, we say that, oh, we're a cash basis, but these are all operational decisions that we have to make so that we're not, we're not scrambling in, in November. Yeah.
So, but to piggyback on that, the ordinance that we approved in December says 2% a year into reserves unless there's an emergency.
Right.
At this point in time, do you feel like it would be good faith to call it an emergency and say we don't need to put the 2% in?
Well, so the way that we put the 2% is in, is in the next year's budget. So essentially what we would be doing is, is putting a, a surplus, you know, revenues beating expenditures based on our projections and, and inherently that will go to reserves. As it relates to an emergency, I, I want to be careful with that word because these are, again, these are numbers that, that aren't new to us. These aren't, this isn't, this isn't a shock, we didn't have an earthquake and we're scrambling to, or, or a, a natural disaster of some sort and we're scrambling because we're in disaster response. We're, we're, we're doing business as usual from my understanding, but we are experiencing a, a higher degree of expense than we originally anticipated budgeting for, which makes problems. Like I said, you can't sell more widgets at the city of Spokane and get that money back. It's the levers that we have to pull are levers that take a long time to implement. So again, increase fees, the council member Kinnear touched a little bit on the fees, public engagement is pretty lengthy on that. Of course, there would be a public engagement piece, but there would also be that, the fact that, that, that the fee side of thing is, you know, about 20% of our overall revenue that we collect. So as the fees relate to kind of what we can pull, I know there's been discussion of fees of, hey, we can increase our fees and we can make up a, a couple million dollars, whatever that may be. We haven't seen action towards that. And so it's going to be something that's lengthy to implement as well as the fact that it's going to be a fraction of the overall need. And then we can decrease expenses in certain ways, you know, overtime oversight, you know, I know we're, we're looking further and further into that, we just got the matrix study back. We could do strategic staffing model shifts, but again, that's a lengthy implementation to say, okay, how can we, how can we get creative on our staffing? Or we could do decrease in non-personnel costs. But again, that's just a fraction because the city is so personnel-centric in terms of, in terms of its expenditures that if you buy less pencils, you're not going to make up 6 million dollars. So really quick, again, let's just jump into homelessness, where we're at. We know that there is an SBO that's coming our way or that has come our way that has made its way through the process for 3.9 million dollars in REIT. We're looking at, at now, we started at, in November of last year when we received the mayor's initial budget to show that, that the mayor was requesting, the administration was requesting 4.3 million dollars in emergency sheltering funding. That was through grants and various and TBD sort of funding sources. There was no direct funding source listed in that, but that's, that's what, from my understanding, was the idea of how much it was going to cost us for homelessness per year. Our most recent understanding from administration is that the current budget for TSA operations, just solely operations for TSA, is at 11.2 million dollars. And that excludes the revive agreement, that excludes the lease, and that excludes any sort of repair and maintenance that's being done to the property. So that's, that's a, a really big difference. I think it's also, I think it's also likely, or well, I think it's important to highlight, you know, back in June of last year, we received a, a proposal from the administration on the RFP that it was going to be three-point, I believe it was, and correct if I'm wrong, if you know it, the numbers, but it was 3.7 million dollars annualized for the Salvation Army or for the Trent Operations Contract. So we've obviously not only just doubled, but we're close to tripling for our annualized contract. Good news is, is our payments are coming in at about 700,000 dollars a month. But this is kind of the important one to look at when we're, when we're looking at homelessness funding for 2023 and 2024. So here are the allocations that you've made in yellow in 2022. You made 4 million dollars allocated from the American Rescue Plan for capital and operations. You did the original one, 3.5 in early 2022 and an additional half a million dollars in a light tranche in 2022. You also allocated 6.3 million dollars in criminal justice allocation based on the flexibility that the legislator provided saying, hey, you can use this only for the periods of 2021 to the end of 2023. So that sunsets this year. If we don't use those funds by the end of this year, we will not be able to use them in 2024. Again, you allocated 2023 in the 2023 budget process. Of the, of those allocations, the only expenditures that have been made, from my understanding in talking to some of the staff as well as looking at the FMS actuals that, which is the money that's coming out that shows within our accounting system, is that we've spent against the 2022 criminal justice allocation. We spent one point, roughly 1.3 million dollars in 2022 for Trent. That led to a 5 million dollar carryover, which was part of the encumbrance carryover that the administration put forth. And we've only spent about 2.135. Now, that number was a little bit updated in our number for this, just the other day. This is, this number is a little bit dated, but not too bad. And we spent 2.135 in Trent cost for 2023, leaving 1.862 million dollars in amounts remaining. Now that removes the 1 million dollar that's allocated for the VOA Crosswalk 2.0. We don't know if that's going out or not, so the 1.8 excludes that. The 4 million dollars from ARPA has not been touched. The 500,000 from criminal justice, the, the way that we got from 4.5 million dollars to 500,000 dollars left pulls out 3.5 million dollars for the gap of the current service providers as well as the half a million dollars that's needed for the capital costs that are, that are coming to the Trent Shelter, leaving only half a million dollars of that allocation left. So with that said, there's about 6.3 million or 6.4 million dollars left in allocations for 2023 if they use the, the ARPA funds. Now, from my projections, I think there's about, the Trent Shelter, including revive, the lease, the repairs and maintenance and the actual operations contract is about 900,000 dollars a month. About 700,000 dollars a month of that is going to Salvation Army. That's, that's, that was given to us as the actuals by administration. Now, 700,000 dollars is the average from November to April, which arguably is probably some of the highest months that we're going to have. So using 700,000 dollars as that marker gives us a pretty, you know, good idea of where they're going to be at, at their highest levels.
Matt?
Yeah.
Is there some way we can nail down whether VOA is going to actually use that money because they did get money from the legislature?
Yeah, we're in communications with them, trying to ask, that, that is the wild card there. And unfortunately, but truly, I mean, a million dollars is a drop in the bucket for the overall need, but it's, it's definitely something that's out there. We're, we're, I know Jen, Sarah Sides is in communication with FON and we're trying to get an idea of the scope of work and when that's going to be completed. My understanding as of latest is they're planning on breaking ground in October. If that's the case, I don't foresee that the full million dollars would be spent. But then again, remember, if the full million dollars isn't spent and it's given back to us at the end of 2023, we can't use it for homelessness as of January 1st, 2024. So we have to get that scope of work and that communication, just like you said, with VOA, which we're working on. Down below in the blue is hypothetical funding. So right now, we've got REIT, REIT 2 that can get a maximum of 1 million dollars in capital funding. We have, I believe council and administration have both agreed that the million dollars is going to go to upgrades to the Trent Shelter. So, so on the far right, you obviously see, while it hasn't been spent, it's completely off the table, as well as the other half a million dollars for the project in the 2023 criminal justice. The REIT 1, the REIT 1 is kind of a trickier one. We received a analysis from the administration that I agree with that, that says the max available is, is roughly 4.7 million dollars that we can pull from. Now remember, REIT 1 is inherently tied to the capital improvement plan, and so there are generally projects that are directly associated to those funding. Now, it's my understanding, and I believe the rest of the budget committee's understanding, that if we pull 3.9 million dollars, there is no disruptions in any of the projects in the capital facilities plans. And budget committee, feel free to correct me if I'm misspeaking at all here, but there would be no disruption in any of the projects because they don't see those projects, the 3.9 million dollar projects is viable in 2023.
Matt, how, how many of these options are, will still be there as an option in 2024 or 2025?
Only the ARPA.
Yeah. Yeah, zero.
Yeah, so the REIT 1 goes away. REIT 2 is a million every year going forward for a little longer. But REIT 1 goes away, criminal justice goes away. And so that's kind of one of the things is we may want to use the REIT 1 that's not interfering first, then some criminal justice and then save that ARPA because then that is sort of a savings account for us.
Right, right. And, and I mean, if we were to say, okay, let's move that $3.9 million allocation up to the $4.7 million allocation. As I was discussing with you the other day, council member Cathcart, we can supplant REIT $2 into REIT 1 if there's, if there's any projects that suffer, if we do pull those projects. Because there's so much crossover in the, in the eligibility of projects of REIT 1 and REIT 2. Yes.
So Matt, I was going to ask, you know, on the REIT 1, they say no other projects will be impacted by using that amount of money. I have not seen or don't remember even what those other projects were going to be that wouldn't be impacted.
They, so they pulled them in our memo and I can go over or you can specifically. Yeah, I could pull it into the memo, yeah.
But are there not other projects that are priorities that could be covered by REIT? By that, I mean, you know, we've got 70 million in traffic calming requests and a pittance of that that we can actually spend. So not to say that there's a whole lot of money in REIT, but you could probably accomplish a few more of those projects.
And, and that's the, I mean, that is the $100 million question.
The difference is they're not, they're not going to get built this year, one way or the other. So it's just a question of how much would be in the savings for other times.
Right, right.
I wanted to bring up one more thing because we're getting out of time. But, but we did have some really good news in a meeting we had with CHHS and Jen Saricides was explaining that I had requested a wall. Well, tell us what the legislature did this last year. They said they did all this money, like what, how, what can we do? And there is a lot of money for all of this, potentially. It's grant-related. They have made the grants. They should know by the end of June, before we're going to do our mid-year budget correction, what we get. So my, my thing has been mostly, let's get through 2023 and then we'll start working on 2024. The good news is we not confirmed, but potentially 2024 is going to be fine because of increased state money coming through. So I just want to throw that out, that is not as, you know, a few months ago before the budget passed from the legislature, it was like, oh my gosh, we might get through 2023, but then what are we going to do? It looks a little more positive.
And it, and it could be. And, and I mean, the other thing that we really need to think about when we're looking at all of these, all of these different sources of funds is what are our other challenges that we have out there, right? So when we're, when we're saying that our order of spend is going to be criminal justice first, REIT second and ARPA last, and we know that we have some challenges in our overtime costs within the police department right now, is that something, instead of going after unallocated reserves, which is the easy fix in November, do we say, okay, can we move some of those costs over into the criminal justice and we use REIT first and that is the first one that we use? Because if we expend the full 10 million, well, 10-plus million dollars of criminal justice funds, there's going to be nothing left. There's going to be no reserves left. If we have an additional jail bill, it's going to be challenging for the city of Spokane. So as it relates to what the need is overall from an organization perspective, we have to look at the strategy of what the spend will be. Again, like council president said, $4 million rolls into 2024. So if we only say, say if we only get $5 million from the state legislator for operating Trent, we could push the American Rescue Plan funds into 2024 and we can use part of that to spend for homelessness for track in 2024 or 2025 for that matter. Because we have that additional time to use that. So those are the things that we need to think about and I'll move super, super quick. Yep, sorry, go ahead.
So on this, the, the other difficult thing with REIT is while those dollars are available, I mean, there's 13 or 14 million dollars in that account and we'll be taking a third of it potentially for this spend. And that is incredibly unpredictable dollars because it's based on, you know, basically a good economy. And if we're heading into a tougher economic environment, then actually taking those dollars away, that's not something that gets replenished the next year or the years after. That could be, I mean, that's a very up and down account. And so that's another challenge in using those dollars.
It is up and down, but not to a huge, I mean, it's, it's not significant swings like sales, like sales tax. It's more, yes, I mean, it is economy-driven, no question about it. But if we're looking at that and we're saying, okay, roughly $6 million is what's brought into it and we lose 10% of that, that's 600,000. So that's, that's a buffer that you could definitely throw in there. I think that that's what the administration is projecting right now is about five and a half million of the $6 million projected is coming in. Even with that said, with the five and a half million dollars, that's where that projection of $4.7 million is. And it is, I mean, barring something very, very substantial, it's not, I mean, it's not going to go down to like zero. It's not going to go down to 2 million. It's not going to go down to, you know, 4 million. It's going to be, it's going to be an impact, but I don't think it's going, from my professional opinion, is, is it's going to be huge. But yes, as all of these are, I mean, we have to be careful. Whether it be sales tax, whether it be property tax, whether it be real estate excise tax, all of them could take a dive. And, and you know, just in the sales tax number that, that we're seeing from March of 2022 to March of 2023, we know that we're behind a percent from last year. So that's problematic because we've not only budgeted a 3% increase, but administration is also relying on another 1% on top of that in their positive variance that they're projecting. So those are things that, like you said, we've got to be definitely conscious of and looking at those forecasts on a regular basis as we're allocating this money. Because things could change based on the activity that we're seeing. Dr. Jones is coming next week during this and those, these are great questions to ask him of saying, you know, if you're in our position and you're relying on real estate excise tax or you're relying on sales tax or you're relying on property tax, what are you thinking in terms of what, what should we save and hold on to? What should we not expend? Or what should we be a little bit more careless with and, not careless, but you know what I mean? What should we be a little bit more free and be able to, you know, spend as we see fit? So those are great questions to ask Dr. Jones next week. Super quick, funding sources. So going back, I've, I've talked to Jen Saricides, I've talked to Kim briefly, Nicolette. I think there's a lot of funding sources that come into the city of Spokane for homelessness specific. I am not an expert in these by any stretch of the imagination, but we have experts that are out there. We have Nicolette, we have Jen, we have Kim. I think that the next meeting, you need to invite them here because right now, from my financial lens, is I'm seeing that we are trying to be a lot of things to a lot of different people and we're trying to tackle a lot of problems. Similar to what the bid was saying, is you've got all of these lists of things that you're trying to do. But in reality, you can't do all of these things with the finite amount of resources that you have. So what do we really want to be good with, with the money that we know is coming in? Because these are not general fund dollars that we typically spend. These are grants that are just passed through to other entities. So as city and county has a, you know, somewhat regional and we're developing more of a regional response, you, I think as you're looking for 2023 and 2024, you have to have conversations with the source matter experts, which is Nicolette, Jen, Kim, saying, okay, what are, what can we realistically be really, really good at with the money that we're bringing in? And that's, that's a question that you have. Because these are, you know, several different, several different sources of funds that are coming in, several different buckets. But being all things to all people isn't going to accomplish anything.
Over the next few years, a lot of that money is already encumbered. So we really don't have access to make impact with it.
Right, right. I mean, and those, those conversations are lengthy. So I just suggest that we do, instead of police next time, we invite homelessness staff, whether it be Nicolette, Jen, Kim, Eric Finch, our IT director, and have that be the bulk of the conversation. And we can, I could try to work with them, as well as Tanya. I think Tanya Wallace should also be there, Johnny Perkins, all the key stakeholders that should be in place for next meeting because that's, that's going to be the, the next most important thing to decide on for the rest of the year. And then moving June 15th to both police and fire and just having them split that, split that. But that's all I have. Sorry that I went over.
All right. Thanks for that.
Yeah.
We're off Monday, but we have a study session next week, Dr. Jones.
Dr. Jones.
And I think that's all. I appreciate everyone's patience for all the information. Thank you, Matt, for all your work on that.
Thank you.
And we're adjourned.